First item on the open work session is proposed regulation. Mr. Williams, how are you?
Yes, sir.
How are you tonight?
I'm doing fine, sir.
Thanks for bearing with us.
No problem. It was interesting to see that.
It was for us, too.
I will certainly let you have the floor if you'd like to start.
Yes, sir. Hello to all the council. My name's Tony Williams. I'm the Wacomiko County Code Enforcement Officer for all the area not covered by the two cities and all the town districts. Three hundred and some square miles that's left, that's my responsibility. So I'm here tonight to give praise to Mrs. Hurley and Attorney Mitchell for crafting an amendment for the repeat nuisance offenders, an administrative and I guess you could call it a penalty fee in reference to that. This is something that I've thought about for a couple of years now, since it was initiated by another county. I thought it would be very helpful to this county that we have that. And with the help of Councilman Shields, I was able to get an audience with Mrs. Hurley. Mrs. Hurley asked whatever questions she needed to ask. I filled in the blanks. She turned it over to Attorney Mitchell, and he put together that amendment that you see before you now.
There any questions that anyone might have here? Yes, Josh.
Just a question, I guess, as far as the amounts that we come up with for a fine. Any particular reason why those amounts were?
Well, what we tried to do was to come up with a figure that was fairly close to a lot of the information that was already in the nuisance code. And that amount that Attorney Mitchell came up with was the $100 amount. We felt that was adequate enough to get our point across as far as the repeat nuisance offenders and their particular behavior that was causing problems, but not so much that it would, you know, cause a serious problem, like a penalty fee that was not that harsh of a penalty fee. I guess you could say that.
Other questions?
Mr.?
Yes.
I just do want to say, by the way, so while we're at it, if I were to, I could never rank county employees, obviously, but if I had a very tippy-top tier of some of the best and hardest-working employees, anytime I've ever had a constituent issue, A.K. Kenny and Mr. Williams here immediately on top of it and handled it so very professionally and so well. I feel like there, you know, it's actually not two individuals, but a team of individuals, it feels like, because you all do such a great job. So any more tools that we can give you in the toolbox to be able to be more effective at that, I'm happy to do so, but I just want to publicly let you know that I've been just astounded at all that you have been able to do over the last five years that I've been on the council, and I just really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Hastings. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Shane, is this exactly what you were wanting when we talked about? Remember, we went on the west side or your side of town?
Yes, and I think that the repeat offenders, you just can't believe what you see. And I almost felt like I was Assistant Code Enforcement with abandoned cars and now we have trailers, what are they called? Campers, people living in campers illegally. And this person, with Tony being the one person for the whole county, 325 square miles, and I was kind of upset, well, I was upset, not kind of, I was really upset when they cut his budget for the part-time code enforcement officer, because he's one man and he can't cover the whole county, just like you heard a young man talking about things that were going wrong and addressed. But see, some things may be state highway problems. It might not be county problems. So we have to decipher which problem is what. But I do agree with Josh. Anytime I called Tony or gave him an address or something, he addressed it. But he needed help in repeat offenders, people with tires in the yard that's still there, because I went by there the other day. They gave him warnings. I even visited this particular person and say, you need to move the tires, and they haven't moved them yet. So I think this will help him to address that issue, and I appreciate this legislation. And Laura, too, Laura, that's, yeah, Laura and Andy.
Mr. Williams, thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
You're not invited in a lot of times, are you?
No, sir. Most times, not invited.
Speaking of tires, this Friday and Saturday coming, there's a tire, free tire disposal day at the Wacomiko County landfill. I think it's minimum 10 tires with no commercial tires. So maybe that'll help a little bit with your problem there.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
At no charge, by the way, so.
I also want to thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it.
So the council's in favor of moving forward?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Mrs. Hurley, if you'll help us with the?
Yeah, so it would come back for introduction, and we can do that the next council meeting on August 15th, yes.
Mr. Williams, you're invited, but you do not necessarily have to attend.
Yes. Okay, Councilman.
Unless you want to bring the popcorn.
I can do that. Sure, I can do that.
Do you have any other questions for us?
No, sir, no.
All right. Look, thank you very much for taking your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion of convenience and recycling centers. Mr. Lufman, good evening. How are you?
Hi, doing great. I have Jennifer Albarro, who's the subject matter expert for the county on this, and I just want to say if there's any initiatives coming from our office, from now on, we'll have Mr. Williams on the panel to present.
Good evening. How are you all today?
Good.
Great.
Oh, great.
So, yes, we did shut down two of our 24-hour unmanned recycling stations. We have gotten feedback from the public. I'm sure you all probably have heard a few things as well. We have an issue with trash in the county. I'm sure you all have heard from people. It's all over the roadways. It's ending up at these recycling stations. Those are our problem children. That's where we find things like, we literally had a dead goat left at the Fosky Recycling Station, which is not far from the elementary school in Delmar. We have dirty diapers, appliances, tires. We have, in the last three days, pulled 10 bags that weighed 40 to 50 pounds out of Jersey Road that was full of old maggot-filled trash. We don't have a whole lot of spare people to spend every waking hour cleaning up these stations. We used to have three road crews from the detention center that used to go around, and they would clean up those stations and they'd clean up the roadways. Unfortunately, they shut those down during the pandemic. They are not bringing them back. So now it is our responsibility to try and keep these locations clean and not a hazard for anybody who's there recycling. The stations that we closed are actually, the Civic Center is 6.5 miles from Allen. It's six miles from the airport. These are all convenience centers where you can recycle. It's 7.1 miles from Parsonsburg and 4.2 from the landfill. The extension office was 1.3 miles from the actual landfill. While it was convenient for people that were going up Nanicoke Road to just unload their recycling there, that area became a nightmare, too. And these are areas that sometimes cameras were available and they worked great. Other times, we have people that are recycling things that they're not supposed to in the middle of the night. It's usually between 1:00 and 3:00 a.m. And once their brake lights, their taillights are aimed at the cameras, you can't tell what the tags are. So unfortunately, we have struggled to try and hold people accountable for a lot of this trash that's ending up everywhere. We do more than any of our surrounding counties as far as recycling centers and convenience centers. We still have 15. They're as far as Wongo, Bivalve, and Sharp Town, and Fruitland, and scattered in between. The people that were using the Civic Center were typically City of Salisbury folks and county people as well. And they typically have blue bins that are curbside. I've heard from people that were upset because they prefer to use our bins as opposed to the blue bins that the city provides. But with the 11 stations that we have with three roll-off drivers, they're trying to keep up with all that. So you're talking four bins that are just recycling and then trash bins on top of it. On top of that, our employees are also handling, let me find the right piece of paper here, sorry. They also pull trash from the Health Department, here, the G O B, the Sheriff Department, Henry Parker, County Roads, Parks and Rec, Tri-County Council. So these are actually, and I have these for everybody if you'd like them, these are the, these are, in a typical week, this is what their three roll-off drivers are supposed to handle. And on top of that, they're also required to try and clean up whatever mess is there. It's an impossible task for three employees to do with the, just the distance alone. Between that and expense for fuel, the wear and tear on the trucks, the bins are not cheap. They have to get repainted. They have to get welded stickers on them. You know, it is a big expense, and it is a good thing that we're, what we're doing with the county, we're doing 30%, which is a, the state actually only requires us to do 20. So we are keeping up with that. We're doing great. Recycling is not dead. We just had 10 loads of tractor trailers of cardboard that were shipped out in the last month or two, and paper as well. We have, we're stockpiling the plastic because of the market. We're hoping it'll come up. It's continuing to drop, unfortunately. And so, of course, being market-driven, we can only find, you know, we can only recycle items that we can find and end market for. So that bases our decision as to what material we can actually handle. Inmates do all our, pull all the contaminants out. We went from 12 to 14 to anywhere from three to five max. That has played a major role in what we can and cannot do. People are complaining right now because of plastic ending up on the landfill. We're actually using that for the fluff layer in the new cell, and that's an M D requirement. However, the plastic that has been sitting in our plastic room is so contaminated at this point between birds that are in there and just garbage, it would be difficult to pull anything out without a hazmat suit on. It's that bad. So.
Why do we accept plastic? If, I mean, from what I understand, only about 4% to 6%.
5% of plastic that's manufactured actually gets recycled.
So why do we even accept it? Wouldn't we save a whole lot of time spending trucks back and forth if we just stopped as a county accepting plastic? Because plastic is indeed trash. I think we all want to see it as something else.
Yeah.
We want to see it as recycling, but the truth is, it is trash, is it not?
What we get in the bins, probably I'd say 40 to maybe 50% is actually a product that we can find markets for. H D P E natural, we get the most money for that. P E T and H D P colored, we don't get as much money. The P E T are your water bottles. H D P, like your laundry detergent bottle. The best bet for people to do if they actually want to make an impact with recycling is to stop buying plastic. You know that as well as most people. And I'm not going to say anything about any of those bottles.
By the way, I appreciate it. I don't think the broader public understands that, and I think that's the bigger piece. I took a picture. I started to send it to you the other day. But I took a picture of my neighbor who, I'm in the city, in the city of Salisbury, and we, you know, he had three bins full to the rim of plastic.
Plastic, yeah.
And that's all he has to recycle. But the truth is, it is just trash. So we are, I mean, it's wasting time. If he would be saving county employee time, he'd be saving the county money if we just put that right in the trash.
Well, people, the plastic industry has spent billions on convincing people that as long as it has the chasing triangle symbol, that it is a recyclable product and we can find a market for it, and that's not the reality. The only products that we can find a viable market for are ones and twos, and those are narrow-necked containers. So if we could just get people to put the proper item and stop recycling, that would help. But the problem is, is a lot of it, this stuff comes in very bagged. They are, the inmates don't have the time to spend when you literally have a building that's 50 by 50 feet and it is loaded with plastic. You cannot open every bag. So for those kind of items, they're getting thrown away. I mean, we've had an entire toilet put in our glass recycling. We've had mattresses. We had 11 mattresses that were dumped at the Civic Center, along with a ton of other trash. I even have pictures of the gentleman who deposited them there. This is the reality. This is our plastic room, and there is a lot of stuff in here that is not even close to being plastic. There is a styrofoam ban in the state of Maryland for any fast food or restaurant that's, you know, handing out food. We're still getting styrofoam in there that people are, you know, it's plastic. It's got to be recycled. Same thing with vinyl siding. And things have gotten so bad at some of these 24-hour recycling stations that people are actually opening up the backs of the bins and putting trash inside.
I understand that we have a lot of violations, and you do great, great work, by the way, and the work that you gave is fantastic, and it's very eye-opening. And there are always going to be, you know, there's anecdotes as far as, you know, what, how terrible the conditions are, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, I think from what you're saying, to a certain degree, I mean, you could close every single station, every single station throughout the county.
Right. That's, that's.
And every county in the state of Maryland could close every single recycling station.
Right.
I think, you know, not so much you, but I think that, you know, administration needs to possibly look at maybe what the solution might be, because it is a problem. We don't have enough inmates.
Right. Right. We don't.
Maybe we need to hire people because we don't have enough inmates.
Right. Well, the contamination is minimal, though, when we have a manned station. So all of these convenience centers where if you have a household permit, you can throw your trash away, you can also recycle there. And that seems to, there's a disconnect between the public understanding that they can use those convenience centers without a permit. So once they realize that and realize that they have 11 places that they can recycle, they seem to get a better grip on it. But it's the unmanned stations, and this is not just our county. It's Worcester County. Somerset County and Dorchester County don't have unmanned stations for that very reason. And as long as there's a person there, people are going to be more honest with an attendant than they are if it's just, you know, I'm there by myself. It's the middle of the night.
You make a very good, you make a very good point. And the point I'm trying to make, I guess, to you, Bunkie, more specifically, is is there a solution to this? Do we man the stations? I say that, we just had a $20 million increase in our budget this year, 20 million. And I would think that we could find some funding to help the recycling effort in Wacomiko County, certainly not to close down. I have, my suspicion probably is that the two, the two stations that you closed down were the most widely used, and now they're shut down. And you're going to, you're going to start filling up your landfill faster than you thought you might be just two weeks ago, and that's going to create a real problem. We already know we have a serious problem at the landfill. So I wouldn't, I would not want to see us give up. I'm wondering whether there's any way that we can readjust and try to figure out where we can find some funding and to reimagine what we need to do.
You said find the funding, but we approved the budget for this, and then they cut the two stations out.
Well, what I'm, I know they cut the two stations. I understand that, and that could be, there could be now extra funding available. But what I am saying is, if you, as it was before, when we had the two stations, you didn't have enough funding, you didn't have enough people, you're relying on inmates. I'm not quite sure why the inmate, number of inmates has been reduced.
Prop, yeah.
You've only had three drivers. I don't know if you're not paying your drivers enough, but I would like to see maybe a comprehensive reevaluation of what we're doing in recycling and try to figure out some way to salvage it so that we can continue with this service. I think it's invaluable. There are a lot of different departments where, you know, this, the county taxpayers subsidize it as part of it.
Right.
We spend more than we should with the airport, but it's what the citizens in Wacomiko County want. So that's what taxpayers' monies are for.
Right.
So I really, I was shocked when it closed. I would, I would like to see if at all possible that we figure out some way to help recover it and to make your job a whole lot easier than recycling, because I've seen the five individuals back there trying to sort through tons of trash.
Yeah.
It was a losing scenario from day one.
Yeah, trust me, I get to clean up the different unmanned stations regularly, so I know firsthand how bad they get.
And I heard you mention about the other recycling centers that are manned. It's hard for people that work during the day to get home and get to those places before they close.
Well, the one at the main landfill that is probably used more than any other one, especially because there's a brush pile there, is open from 6:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m., seven days a week. It used to be open until 8:00. During the pandemic, the hours were cut. But it is open seven days a week from 6:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. And that usually is enough time for the average person to get there and unload trash or recycling or whatever. Plus, they can do so much more recycling than just the usual household stuff. We take oil, antifreeze, propane tanks, batteries, brush, oyster shells. You know, there's a whole lot to recycling that's not the, just the four main things that most people think of in their house.
You take batteries?
Yes, we do.
Okay, that's good to know. That's good to know.
Now, we do have Household Hazardous Waste Day coming up in October that'll handle any of the lithium-type of batteries or any of the chemicals that people have laying around their house. And we do have a scrap tire event day that's coming up, actually Friday and Saturday. Households can bring up to 10 tires for free. The state just, you know, changed all that, so.
One thing I was going to say is, I appreciate what you do. First time I met you, you were very passionate in recycling, and I thank your value to the county. Thank you. Secondly, this is just a recommendation. I think, I think most of the council would probably agree with this is, and I'm not trying to attack anyone, I'm just saying maybe next time we should have this before we shut down. Just, just because we had a lot of people calling us and, and it was just a lot of confusion. This is very informative. If this was a month ago, I don't think we would have had the calls that we would have had. But my second, my third thing that I wanted to say was, with the cuts, maybe, maybe, I don't know if there's specific transfer stations where we can maybe increase the hours to make it more convenient. As Shane Baker pointed out, it is quite difficult sometimes because the one by the airport, you know, closes at 5:00 or whatever, and it's a certain time, a certain day, and I might not be able to make it that day. If it was one more hour or two more hours open, then bam, I could probably make it. So that might be an avenue.
Just out of curiosity, you say we have three roll-off drivers?
We only have three, yes. And the trucks, you know, if there's an issue with the trucks, and the trucks are not new vehicles, they break down. Matter of fact, today, we only had two that were roadworthy. So, you know, that sort of thing is, plays into the whole trying to keep up with the, you know, large volume of bins that have to be pulled.
So do we have any open positions?
I think we have 10 at least at the landfill.
Do you know if they're advertised?
I, I'm going to assume so. I don't know.
Yeah, that'd probably be good if we got some more drivers and get more people in the mix. And to everybody else's point, thank you, the tour that you took us on. That was very informative. I learned a lot that day, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
I don't, I don't think she's here tonight, but I had Alicia Zan reach out to me, a constituent, who was very upset about the closings, and others have reached out as well. And I just, I hate to see them go because it seemed like it really impacted the citizens of the county. A lot of people were really upset about it. So if there's anything we can do to help bring them back, Bunkie let us know. I'd be interested, but it affected a lot of people.
Even if we're dealing with an enterprise account, Bunkie, we have subsidized enterprise accounts before. We put a ton of money in the airport at some time. Josh?
Yeah, and I just like, of course, I add on to that, the, I mean, we had, I mean, easily two dozen people immediately reach out and were questioned, why did the Civic Center location specifically close? I think as Mr. Holloway would always bring up, if we, you know, the more that you limit places for folks to be able to take trash or recycling, you know, the, there's a, there's a correlation between that and the amount of trash that's found on the side of the roads. So obviously, if we close a station, transfer station, or remove that off, that doesn't mean that that's immediately going elsewhere into the trash. It's, you know, a lot of that ends up on the roads or in the other areas. So if, the more that we can continue to focus on helping people do the right thing, and especially, I, I mean, I don't, is there a current location in the city of Salisbury?
No, and the reason why we don't have one unless Jersey Road is considered in the city is because the city does curbside recycling, so it would be kind of redundant to.
But the, I mean, that's obviously, but, I mean, I can look out my window in the middle of City of Salisbury and see a county property in my house. You know, the county properties all over the place.
Yes, it is very.
I think they do, we do need a location, I mean, the city of Salisbury, it is obviously the largest population in the county.
Right, and a lot of, a lot of the constituents do use our recycling because they prefer it over single stream, which is putting everything in the bin. And then when that glass bottle breaks, it contaminates the paper and the cardboard. So, yeah, I understand why they, they like using our stations. And like I said, all these convenience centers located throughout the county do great, great work, and they stay clean, and they're not, you know, we don't have issues with those like we do with the unmanned stations. Now, we still do have Delmar, Fruitland, Jersey, Jersey Road, Pittsville, and Willards that are unmanned stations. Like I said, Jersey Road, we just cleaned a bunch of trash that's constantly being dumped there. Unfortunately, we don't have electric or the ability to put cameras up. Otherwise, we might be able to curtail some of it, but.
Any particular effort that we could do to, I think that location is important, that, I mean, a lot of.
Civic Center.
Civic Center location specifically. I mean, if we need to put up extra cameras or whatever, security, I mean, certainly, I'd support that. But I, what we don't want to see, obviously, is that more of the trash ends up just being put on the side of, people go, put it outside of the road.
Right, and I get what you're saying, but there actually is, there's a town, either Vermont or New Hampshire, they do not charge for anything trash-wise, nothing. You can throw tires, doesn't matter what it is, your entire house if you want. You are not charged a penny. They have roadside trash. So I don't know if it's the, I think some of it is the money issue, but I think it's, it's also laziness and people's attitude of it's somebody else's problem. And we see that in our recycling bins because people, you know, purposely throw garbage in there thinking, well, you know, someone else will make it better.
Mr. President, the last comment, I'll just say, obviously, Mr. Lufman, I do, I would love to see the county come up with better options for addressing waste. You know, 40% of what goes into landfill is, you know, is biodegradable. We, we probably have, what, 18, realistically, 18 years left on our, on our, on our, I mean, maybe less, who knows? I don't even want to speculate, but obviously, the citizens and the taxpayers of this county are going to be in a rude awakening when there's no other place to go to take your trash. And when that landfill fills up, you know, there's no other space in the county, so.
Well, and one of the reasons why it's filling up quickly, if you talk to any of the roll-off drivers, we are literally, our landfill is right off of Route 50. Other surrounding counties, including Delaware, you have to drive a half an hour or better to get to those landfills. So when you're centrally located in the middle of, you know, the eastern shore and you're right off a highway, you're going to get a lot of the garbage. And we're also one of the, you know, less expensive landfills, too, as far as tipping fees go. So of course, you know, you're getting that as well.
So I guess I'll add to that to the administration. I think the more that we can think through ideas, and I think anaerobic digestion, you've heard me talk about that before, Mr. Lufman, I think that, something, along those kind of lines could help, you know, divert, we just basically need to push that timeframe out as long as possible. So I'm there to support in any kind of way, and I do appreciate all that you do, the great job that you do with recycling in the county, so thank you.
Thank you.
James, you even suggested the idea of incineration. I think Frederick County had tried it, but they became, it became political turmoil, imagine that. So, but I think, you know, this is, this is an informative work session, but I hope at the same.
I think, you know, this is, this is an informative work session, but I hope at the same time it can be constructive where we do seriously maybe rethink where we are now and look at what might be necessary to salvage what we have and save our landfill to recycle at the same time.
And this is something, the landfill specifically, not recycling specifically, is one of the reasons we brought Wayne Strasberg back on contract, that he's looking, he's looking at this issue and preparing. And we, I don't want to give a timeframe, but in the future, we expect to have Mr. Strasberg present to the council on that.
Department of the Environment also working at the landfill?
Well, close. Maryland Environmental Service.
Environmental Service, I'm sorry.
MDE.
Yeah, and MDE's there where they just approved Cell 10, which is, we're doing the fluff layer on now. But Maryland Environmental Service is doing a study on landfill now to get to Councilman Hastings' question of how much time do we have left with the current configuration. We just, 10 was approved. The contract for the cells that was approved, you know, before my time, a year or two ago, was for 10 and eight. So they've now started designing eight. We expect that to be done in 120 days. So, then we'll have two more open cells, which would be good.
Good question. Yeah, good job. I guess the disappointing thing about closing these recycling stations is, we've heard all these years about how we're supposed to be going green, you know, and you turn around and first thing you know, the recycling is closed down. Do you have any idea how many, do you measure it in tons? Of tons of material come out of those?
Bins?
Bins a year?
Yeah, well, I...
At the Civic Center?
Yeah, we do, we do have the specific numbers. I don't have them with me.
So that's fine, you don't have...
Yeah.
I've heard it's about 400 or 500 tons a year. That sounds like a lot.
Well, and, you know, that's, that's before it's been sorted.
Sorted, yeah.
So, you know, when you...
I mean, move.
Yeah, yeah, once you sort it, you're...
So, I can understand a little bit of the one on Nanticoke Road being it's only a mile. But, and the other thing that, when we say that it's in the city or near the city, you know, we've heard this a lot of times, city residences are also county residences, you know, so. But I think we need to find a solution to try to get those reopened. You know, if it's driver shortage, you know, we need, I mean, we, like John said, we increased the budget $20 million and we're closing things up, you know, it doesn't seem...
That makes sense.
It doesn't make sense, you know. Sounds like maybe there's, need to get to work on it. Anyway, if you can, appreciate it.
Anything you'd like to add?
No, other than, you know, we do have 11 stations that are convenience centers and another five recycling stations compared to, the next county has eight, and that's Worcester County. Somerset has even less. So we go above and beyond. I know some people feel it's an inconvenience to drive a mile or two to get to maybe the landfill, but, you know, under the circumstances and with the minimal number of drivers we have, it's been a struggle for us to try and keep up.
Thanks again for being here, and thanks for the work you're doing, and thanks for taking the time to stay here this late.
No problem.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can we take a two-minute recess so we can switch out the cords? Because we do have someone attending remotely for the next work session.
All right, we'll take a two-minute recess. And our reconvenance is Waukegan County Council Legislative Session 2023-15 for August 1, 2023. The first item on the agenda for the open work session is a letter of support for the Fire Station Act. That's HR 1814 and Senate Bill 977. These are federal bills that we're talking about, to create a $750 million grant program within the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which is FEMA, that hopefully will help provide funding to modify, upgrade, and construct fire and EMS facilities. We're lucky to have with us tonight, this is Alyssa Hastings, Eastern Shore Regional Director for the U.S. Senator Chris Van Hollen. Alyssa, glad to have you here.
Evening. Thank you, Mr. Council President and members of the council. Thanks for having me. So tonight, we're gonna be just bringing forward information about a bill that Senator Van Hollen is sponsoring called the Fire Station Act. But I also just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. This is my first time coming to the council since I've been in my new position as Eastern Shore Regional Director. And I pass along my business cards to Laura and to all of you, just anything that you need as far as federal support. Our office is based in Cambridge. I cover the entire Eastern Shore for the senator, and I'm just, I just want to be, you know, as much of a resource as possible to all of you as your residents are having, you know, everything from last-minute passport troubles to anything, any grant letters of support for federal, federal grant opportunities. We just want to make sure that you have that information and that I can, we can turn things around really quick and be a fantastic team, so.
Good point.
Yes, and, full disclosure, Josh and I are married. But I also have, with, speaking of our fantastic team, I do have my colleague Francesca, who's zooming in today, who is our legislative correspondent, who really is, this act is, she calls it one of her babies. She really knows it in and out, and so she's gonna talk about it and explain why it came about, what's in it, and what you can do to support, and also just make sure that you fully understand what's in the legislation.
Can we bring Francesca full screen here at all? Do you know?
I think if she speaks.
Here comes Tom. He'll fix it.
Hi, can you hear me? Should I hold on?
Yeah.
Maybe if you leave your audio on, that might work. That way we'll be able to see you full screen.
All right, we got you.
Okay, you can see me?
Yes.
And here.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I wish I could be there in person. Thank you, Council President Cannon, for having me and council members. It's been an honor to listen in. The work that you do is so important, and I really just appreciate the time. So I'd love to talk to you about the Fire Station Act. This is a really important bill that Senator Van Hollen is leading on the Senate side, and Representative Pascrell of New Jersey is leading on the House side. So the bill, you have a one-pager there with you, and happy to answer questions in a second. But just as an overview, this really came about, this is a reintroduction, so the senator introduced it last Congress. This came about just essentially from a need for fire station reconstruction and renovation. As you know, we have about 370 fire stations across Maryland. We did a survey in 2022, and about 71 departments needed some form of renovation. And across the country, that statistic is sort of similar. We, there's a 2019 survey conducted that showed that 44% of fire stations across the country are over 40% of, over 40 years old and need some sort of repair and lack sufficient ventilation and sort of other things that are really essential for firefighters to do the work that they do. So the bill would provide a $750 million grant program administered through FEMA, which would sit alongside existing grants, notably AFG and SAFER. So right now, neither one of those grants, it can be used for fire station renovation or reconstruction. So as much need as there is for AFG and SAFER funds across the country, there is an equal amount of need for fire station renovation and reconstruction. So we're really lucky on the Senate side to have both, obviously Senator Van Hollen, who's leading the bill, and Senator Cardin. But also, we worked really closely with Senator Murkowski of Alaska. She's been a champion on, for firefighters, and this is a huge issue in her state as well. So this is a bipartisan bill on both the Senate side and the House side. So we're really lucky to have great partners and cosponsors. But we do need some more support, so we'd love to have, you know, if, you know, I don't want to tell you how to advocate, but, you know, a support letter to the Maryland delegation. Not all Maryland representatives have co-sponsored the bill, so that would be really helpful. And just, you know, whatever contacts you have across the state and also the country, the more mobilization for this bill, the better. So that's an overview of where we are currently. The bill has been introduced, and it's been referred to the Senate Committee on Homeland Security and Governmental Affairs. We have the support of the chairman of that committee, Senator Peters. So he's, he's very, you know, a champion for this issue. But it needs to get essentially through that committee and to be considered before the full Senate. And as much as it's sort of easy to introduce a bill, it's very hard to get one passed, as you know. So the more sort of energy and information that we can get out about this, the better. So I know there was interest from the council on this legislation, so wanted to give an overview, an update, and just leave it to you for any questions you have about the bill and next steps.
I guess a question I might have is, you said it was introduced in the last session, and, and I guess, not sure maybe what happened in the last session, or why there might be reasons and why there might be pushback on this particular piece of legislation?
Yes, so just to be, to be honest with you, so last Congress, we, the senator introduced the bill, and the authorization amount was for $1 billion for the grant, because oftentimes you authorize at a higher level, and then when it's actually, you know, appropriated and then obligated, it's much lower. So AFG and SAFER, for example, are authorized for $750 million, but the obligate, you know, obligated for lower, probably around 300 million, if, you know, a little higher. But I can get you those numbers exactly. So to answer your question, the Senate kind of operates on fives sometimes, so it's really hard to predict why a certain thing didn't go through. It wasn't bipartisan last Congress. A lot of people don't understand necessarily why you would need to add a third funding bucket to AFG and SAFER. Those are the most famous grant programs related to firefighters and stations, but neither one can be used for fire station renovation and reconstruction. So I think they're just building, you know, building momentum and educating staffers and members about the issues and why the specific grant program is so important. These things are hard to do. It would be a brand-new grant program, and the budget environment is very difficult. And so I think there was some apprehension to do something at such a high authorization amount. So we negotiated with Republican partners to have it lower. So that's why there's the difference from $1 billion to $750 million, which was where our Republican counterparts were more comfortable, and it's an appropriate amount for a grant program that would sit alongside those that have the same amount.
Yeah, thank you, Francesca, for being here. Appreciate it. I just, I was doing a little bit of research, obviously beforehand, just, and I want to clarify what I think you said was basically, we just, it'd be best if we could help get our Maryland delegation to support, to sign on to the bill. Is that right? Or to support it? And it's not that it, from my, when I was looking around, it's not that there's a particular negative piece or component of the bill that is bad. It's just that a lot of the, or a lot of the congressmen just haven't had a chance to even get around to actually signing on to it. They just haven't been asked.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So, yes, there's not any, there's not like a gotcha part of this bill. It's pretty simple and straightforward. Frankly, people don't really think about fire stations as needing renovations. It's like fire equipment and personnel, both of which are very important. But fire, one example we just heard from, actually from FEMA, is in Texas, there was extreme heat a couple weeks ago, I mean, ongoing, it's seen across the country, and firefighters were, I mean, sweltering inside of the barracks because there was not appropriate ventilation. And this extends to, you know, HVAC systems and, you know, cancerous chemicals. Like, I mean, the issues sort of are quite extensive, and they range in whether it's just like needing renovations or a completely new ventilation system, et cetera. But it's just the Texas example is one where, you know, how can firefighters do what they do every day if, if within the fire station they're, you know, they're not provided the infrastructure that they need to, to work at their highest potential. And so I think there's just a lack of understanding about what, where the funds would come from for something like this, if that makes sense. So I think being educated, you know, helping people understand what existing grants exist, why this, why this is necessary, and what it would sit alongside, and just making people aware of the needs across Maryland. And like I said, we have 370 fire stations. The last time we did a survey, about 70 needed some form of repair. The needs are probably higher, and that was just, you know, a survey that we did. So we might have missed a few. So the needs are existing and ongoing, so, and will just continue as the fire stations become older.
Does this have the endorsement, I would ask, of the National Firemen's Association or the State Firemen's Association in Maryland?
I'm so sorry, I can't see, but I wasn't able to hear the question.
Oh, President Cannon was asking if this bill has been endorsed by the National or the State Firemen's Association?
It's been endorsed by the International Association of Firefighters, International Association of Fire Chiefs, National Volunteer Fire Council, Congressional Fire Services Institute, and the National Fire Protection Association. So, but we are looking for partners all the time, so I'm happy to reach out and make that connection if we haven't already.
Yeah, the Maryland State Firemen's Association, I was wondering if they endorsed it.
I personally have not reached out to them, so that's, that's a great do-out for me. I'll get on that tomorrow and make sure that there were the, the bill and that I connect, connect to them.
Would, would it help if we had not just our support, but maybe the local firemen's chief associations to send, maybe give us a letter of support for this as well?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And the next question I had is, this is for, obviously, this is for volunteer and full-time. This is for both, right? I was just curious if, I'm just asking the question, if this is to go through, do the volunteers have first come, or does it go right to whoever applies first?
So, the details of that, that's a great question. I, off the top of my head, I'm not aware. As written, you, the applications would be considered, like, as applied through the grant program. FEMA would obviously, because this is a new program, we're working with FEMA to sort of understand the resources that they would need to administer a program like this. $750 million is a lot of money, so, you know, how they would go about doing that. I assume that it would be similar to AFG and SAFER, where departments and stations apply and are considered on a case-by-case basis. But as written, the bill does not prioritize volunteer or full-time in any way. I think it would be needs based on need and the application.
Yeah, the reason why I ask is, most of our county is volunteer. Salisbury has, has full-time, but other than that, it's pretty much all, all volunteer. And, you know, yeah, they desperately need money, and I think this is great. I just wanted to, you know, make sure that, I don't know if it's possible to prioritize the volunteers first. It's just, just a question. I think everyone needs the money. But I don't, I don't know if that's a, that's an ability. And when this comes about, the volunteers don't necessarily have the help with writing these grants all the time. And I don't know if that's an avenue where maybe the senator can assist these, these local small companies that just don't quite have the manpower to write these grants, because they, they are labor-intensive and they need the money.
Tri-county or two.
Yeah, maybe the tri-county.
That's a good point.
The technical assistance piece is critical, understanding that, like you said, the, a lot of the volunteers are, like you said, they're, they're needing a little bit of assistance with the grant applications. And I know, Francesca, we are, I've been approached by, since I started the position, multiple fire, fire companies and groups with help from congressionally-directed spending. There's, you know, other different types of pots of, of money available, but this one would be specifically for that construction and renovation.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Volunteers, volunteers need it, I think, the most. They don't have the support of tax, tax revenue. They need it the most, and I think somehow or other, they are the ones that are gonna be most compromised, because they don't, as you said, they don't have the grant writers.
And that leads me to another question, is, you're making this grant, and I love this, and I applaud you all for taking the initiative to do this, but is there an idea to possibly have a, a grant to fund for a county volunteer grant writer? Because I've had, this is just... Because I've had, this is just an idea, and it's worth kicking around, but I've had volunteers say, "We need help." I mean, they need help, and they can't quite afford, or they don't have the know-how to do all of this. And it's just, maybe it's an idea to maybe have a grant for us to apply for, so that we could have a dedicated grant writer just for volunteer service, maybe in general.
Francesca, are you aware of any firefighter groups that do this kind of support, or anything through the state that we could point people in the direction of?
Yeah, and I'm so sorry, I can't see anyone, so I can't direct my gaze toward everyone who's talking, so I apologize for that. But these are all really, really important points, and I think the more that we're pushing, I think the big priority is to get as much mobilization behind the authorization, because that's kind of the biggest hurdle in this sort of trickier budget environment. But the question of how this is, you know, once passed, how does this actually work? That's a conversation we've started to have with FEMA, and I think that your point about, you know, okay, it's great that this money exists, but what about these smaller, all-volunteer fire departments? Another do-out for me is to really look into whether there's existing resources or pro-bono or, you know, free resources for volunteer fire stations to apply for. Like, what happens for all volunteer fire stations that apply for AFG and SAFER grants? I don't know off the top of my head, don't want to speak, you know, without those facts, but I think that would be a good place to start. So I'm going to get that information to Alyssa, and she can bring it back to the council, or I can email somebody directly. But I think that would be a good place to start, just to see how those grants are, how that works right now. And if not, I mean, the senator is a very entrepreneurial thinker. I think that that's a great thing to take back and think as an office. You know, how can, when we're thinking about these bigger authorizations, how can we think of making it even more accessible to those who need it the most? One thing I do want to know, and this is kind of wonky, but I think important, we got into the Department of Homeland Security Appropriations Subcommittee Bill text, report language that requires FEMA to provide Congress with a report in 180 days after enactment on the reconstruction and renovation needs of career fire departments, combination fire departments, and volunteer fire departments across the country, and then an estimated cost for those needs. So this kind of report would be really helpful to sort of indicate, you know, what percentage of the fire departments that need renovation and reconstruction are volunteer. That data would be very helpful, because right now, I'm not aware, and that would include, obviously, fire departments in Maryland. So that report will be a very helpful piece of information for us to work with as we're thinking about, you know, if it doesn't pass this, Congress will obviously push it again next, the following session. And with this report, it might help us include more language in the bill that directs, that helps volunteer fire departments more, specifically.
One more question, and I'll shut up. Would it help, whenever this comes around, that maybe a representative from maybe the county come to the Congress and testify on the need for this? Would that, I mean, is that a benefit? Would that, I mean...
Always. I mean, you can't tell a firefighter no. They are heroes. So that's actually what got Senator Murkowski on board, is a bunch of firefighters and chiefs came to, from Alaska. It was a fly-in day, and they said, "Listen, like, this is huge, we really need this." And there's a bill that Senator Van Hollen's thinking about, and she was like, "Sign me up, this is something I can do." So it's definitely helpful, you know, as we're mobilizing, I mean, Representative Harris would be a great partner to have on this, if you can reach out to his office and other members of the Maryland delegation. I mean, it would be great to have everybody on board. You know, to their credit, I'm not sure how much outreach the House is doing. So, you know, Representative Pascual's office might not be bombarding people, basically how, I don't want to transplain the process, but basically, you have, the bill is introduced, and then the staff kind of just do a bunch of whipping of cosponsors, and they try to get as many members on. They just might not have been doing that outreach as extensively, or might have had a bunch of other priorities that they're working on. So I don't want to say that there's a reason why the Maryland delegation is not on, but I think definitely having a letter of support from you to the entire Maryland delegation would be very helpful, and having people come to the Hill and meet with staff and representatives and senators is always welcome. So it's always welcome to have people come, and I think it would be helpful in this case.
Any other questions? Everybody okay with sending the letter?
Absolutely.
Francesca, thank you very much for your help, and Alyssa, we appreciate you setting all this up and taking your time to be here tonight.
Of course, I just thought I couldn't be there in person. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Francesca. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Alyssa. Next item on the agenda is a discussion on cannabis legislation. We have Mr. Andrew Illuminati and Ms. Lori Carter. Good to see you both. How did you get last on the agenda? At 9:00? Thank you for preparing everything, Mr. Illuminati.
Yes.
Very thorough. Thank you very much.
Yes, certainly.
Good evening to everyone. We're here to have a discussion on, again, cannabis, and we have a presentation that Mr. Illuminati has put together, and it was also a presentation that he presented before the Planning Commission about a week ago. And we wanted to share that with you and also to get some feedback as well. So I'm going to turn it over to him at this time.
So the politically correct term is no longer marijuana, weed, pot, cannabis, that's a term everyone uses. So that's just the new term. It's no longer referred to as marijuana. There were times when they went back between the J being an H, and now it's just cannabis. So this is an overview of what the differences are, what's being regulated, what is not being regulated, and then also to answer what is hemp, and these are definitions in the statute. So why is this allowed? Last year, during the general election, there was a ballot referendum to allow for adult-use cannabis by adults 21-plus. That passed, the General Assembly passed the legislation that we are now discussing in the form of the Cannabis Reform Act, and then it went into effect July 1st with a legal adult-use marketplace in Maryland. So this was sort of discussed last time I was here, so I'll go a little faster. There's three forms of revenue dispersment. First is dispersment by law, that's some of the entities. Second is to fund the cannabis administration, and then third, to the counties, and then the municipality, if there is a dispensary located within it, receives 50% of what the county receives. The Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund is one of the mandated programs. So this is revenue that gets distributed to the county to fund low-income communities. And as you see towards the bottom, each county shall adopt a law establishing the purpose for which money received from the fund may be used, and then beginning in 2024, there needs to be a biannual report. So in the coming weeks, we'll be asking for that law to establish where it's going. Basically, the only thing it can't go towards is funding law enforcement agencies or activities.
Any idea what type of community-based initiatives are being suggested?
Legands.
If you don't, you don't. We've got a ways to go.
It's too early up.
Okay.
There are great ideas written into this without follow-through definitions, and we'll see, we'll probably get COMAR regulations in the coming months that will further define what can and can't be done. These are some definitions that we'll be using throughout when the Planning Commission discusses growers versus processors versus dispensaries and onsite consumption establishments. So current recreational dispensaries, as we discussed last time we were here, there's one in Maryland, so that was a medicinal facility. They paid a conversion fee, and then that's all state-level issue. And that's located at Peninsula Alternative Health at 1003 Mount Herman Road, Salisbury. However, by January 1st, 2024, the state will award additional dispensary grower/processor license throughout the state. So this is the location of the dispensary in Wycomico County. You'll see on this Google aerial image. You'd think this was taken on the weekend, or maybe during a weekday. Since the sheriff and I were up here before you 14 days ago or so, I've made a point of driving by that location at various times of the day, and if the aerial photograph was taken today, it would look nothing like this. Before tonight's council meeting, I drove by where Going Nuts is located, there was a tow truck driver there. I spoke to a tow truck driver, and that tow truck driver has a contract with every non-cannabis business to tow. Ideally, it would be a deterrent. Every time I've driven by, I've seen a tow truck there, and it's unfortunately not. Apparently, that is something right now, that people see it, park, and just try to run in before they get hooked up. There's been some, there's a BOC report after the sheriff was here about what the dispensary was doing, putting up signs saying, "Be a good neighbor, don't park where we're not allowed to park." Today, I actually did see cones set up at the dispensary, and in what I imagine is an employee outside in a green vest, appear to be directing people, but nonetheless, I saw individuals walking across, not even utilizing the sidewalk, but just walking along the, in between the parking lot of the other businesses. So...
I wanted to go back just very quickly on the licensing, that the public understands very clearly that as of January 1st, 2024, it will be the state and not the county that will be awarding these additional licenses.
Absolutely correct. The county does not have a say in who, to whom to award the licenses, whether it's dispensary, processing, or growing. So no one at this level is being asked to make that decision, that's made by the cannabis administration. All right?
Thanks.
I read a report this morning that said we're 30 days in, and statewide, there has been $64 million worth of recreational cannabis sales in one month in the state.
I can believe that.
Gives you an idea how much money is involved in this.
So one thing that the county does have control over is onsite consumption. So this is the distribution of cannabis or cannabis products, which are subsequently consumed at the place of business. This is oils, ointments, edibles, tinctures. If you don't know these terms, I had to look them up myself, they're defined in the law. But what cannot be consumed onsite is indoor smoking, and that concludes vaping. But this is, somebody walks up, buys a cannabis brownie, and then sits down and consumes it there, and that's what onsite consumption is. Now, state law did put some prohibitions into what can occur at onsite, so all onsite, all on-duty employees cannot consume cannabis, they can't distribute free samples, there can't be consumption of alcohol, the smoking or vaping of tobacco or tobacco products, an activity that requires an additional cannabis license, you cannot serve somebody who's impaired, intoxicated, and no one under 21 is admitted. But nonetheless, a lot can occur onsite. There are some requirements for employees, and if this county did go in the direction of allowing for onsite consumption, the county may adopt additional requirements for education on safe consumption of cannabis on the premises of a licensed onsite consumption establishment.
And you mean something that is, to be clear, it's, so I'm trying to wrap my head around this, this is...
Sure.
Exactly. If you even get there, if the county does not allow for onsite consumption, and one of the things that the sheriff discussed last time is, there are no officers who are trained in field detection of persons under the intoxication and possible impairment of a non-alcoholic substance. There's not a breathalyzer test like there is. And so potentially, you have this situation where onsite consumption, and how is it going to be able to, when someone leaves there, pull them over and determine whether or not they're impaired or intoxicated by CDS? So, or cannabis here. So this is what onsite consumption is. That's probably the biggest thing that the county has direct control over, and unless the county authorizes it, the municipality would also have to authorize it. So the county can say, "We're not going to allow onsite consumption." There's some debate on whether or not the municipality can override that, but if the language of the bill is, "Only if the county and the municipality agree that there will be onsite consumption." So then we get into zoning restrictions in general. So the county may establish reasonable zoning requirements for cannabis businesses and decide how to distribute its allocation of revenue. The county may not unburdenly, unduly burden a cannabis licensee, prohibit the transportation or delivery through political subdivisions, meaning from Worcester County into Wycomico County, prevent an entity whose license may be converted from gaining that license, which has already occurred for the one medicinal, former medicinal shop in the county, enter or into an agreement for the cannabis establishments to provide money, donations, and contributions in order to exist in the political subdivision, and the county may not impose its own tax on cannabis. But the county, as we said, has the ability to zone. There are some zoning restrictions, 500 feet of an existing primary or secondary school, or a licensed childcare center, or registered family childcare home, or a playground, recreation center, library, or public park, and not within 1,000 feet of another dispensary. To give you an idea of what 1,000 feet is, though, where the, on Mount Herman Road to the Burger King at the intersection of Civic and Mount Herman Road, that's barely 1,000 feet. So 1,000 feet may sound like a lot, but put it in context of where the dispensary is to where the Burger King is, that's 1,000 feet.
What do they mean when they say, they say that planning and zoning will coordinate all this, but then they say that the county may not unduly burden a cannabis business? What the heck does that mean, "unduly burden"?
Taking a step such as requiring 1,000 parking spots per one square foot. So could you even actually accomplish that? No. Is any other business in the county have that regulation on top of it? No. But there can be an idea of what protects the public health, safety, welfare, balanced against what state law allows.
Are we aware of what all those intricate details might or might not be? Parking, and, I mean, we have to have some guidance on where Ms. Carter goes with this. How do you structure it? Do we actually have lists of things which were considered a burden on the cannabis businesses?
No, it's just a generic term, but it's something that the... No, it's just a generic term, but it's something that the Planning Commission will actively look at. So for example, on the state law, if you look, there's nothing, there's no limitation on houses of worship. But the county may say that's important to us. We don't want a dispensary within 500 feet of a house of worship. And so if you look at these depth of what's there, playground, rec center, library, public park, that's more youth oriented, not necessarily adult quality of life oriented. But houses of worship would be a prime example of something that requiring the same 500 feet, I would argue, if challenged, does not unduly burden. But if one was to say you cannot have a dispensary located within 5,000 feet of an open space, however broadly that's defined, and when you do look at the map and the zoning within the county, you couldn't actually put a dispensary anywhere in the county physically under the regulations that get adopted, then that would be unduly burdensome if you, if it's written in such a way to make it impossible for them to operate.
I liked how they said that we may reduce the distance, the 500 or the 1,000. We can reduce it, but we can't extend it. And that's something, we have 30 more if we want, but we can't have 10 less.
And the other part, you mentioned, John, it basically, when it says unduly burden, it, it basically opens the door that they can do anything they want to do. I mean, really, it does. My question is, is there any limits to how much legal cannabis someone can buy?
There are. I was not prepared to answer that question. It's, it's written into the code though, but from a zoning perspective, that wasn't the concern today. I can get you that answer.
An answer on that, that's interesting.
Talbot County implementing their moratorium for nine months.
It's not legal, right?
So there's a couple of different concepts with the moratorium. Right now, we know between now and about January 1st, the state is not going to award any more license. So one of the reasons why we're here tonight and we asked for this is because the staff have an expedited plan that will still comport with county law, but to get this back before council in a timely manner with proposed legislation. So there's going to be the regular planning commission meeting next Thursday. That is not going to address cannabis. But at the end of the month, on the, I believe the 24th.
August 24th.
Is going to be a special planning commission meeting solely to discuss cannabis. The intent is to conclude that meeting with the ability to have a public hearing at the next meeting and ideally recommend legislation with a director's report to this body by October 3rd, which is your first meeting in October. Depending on how everything is moving, a work session that night, I believe it will have to be introduced as emergency legislation in order to know that this gets passed before. But understanding the concerns that have been expressed at the last meeting, what I see tonight and expect to receive more comment on tonight is get up to the line of, without going over, unduly burdensome. Is that the feedback that?
I just think that we'll need the minutes of the meeting. I don't know how long it takes them. I mean, we can't get the minutes before they, before they approve the minutes, but I think we need the minutes and we need to also know what the public input was, right?
Totally correct.
And we possibly get them that quickly, right? Because they have to approve the minutes in their, in one of their sessions.
With the meeting being on August 24th, possibly, and we are dealing with a, a staffing situation with one of our staff that normally staffs that meeting is going to be out.
Maybe we don't need minutes if we can just get a.
But if we can at least give you at least a synopsis, I think that's at least something that we can do.
Okay.
I have a question. We talked about the 500 feet from the churches. Are we going to put that in there?
That's, so this is what's in state law. Staff, we began to look at houses of worship, but also expand that recreation center is not defined, but there are definitions for active recreation and something like recreation center in the county code, which will be broad and include places like where kids go, but that aren't publicly operated. So thinking, though these are not in the county, Coco's Fun House, the Trampoline Park up north, those are types of places where you go, okay, does that fit this definition? But let's expand that definition if the goal is to not have these dispensaries near the youth.
Is the thought process that if we had it next to a Coco's, that a person would walk out of the Coco's, light up, and then go give it, you know, go give their joint to the, to the kids at Coco? I guess I'm, I'm failing to understand. First of all, I don't think that Maryland has given us much leeway to do anything about it. They clearly didn't care about giving us money to have within the county. This is basically just a Maryland situation and we don't have the ability to, in my view, to really do much of anything. Obviously, a, a, a large majority of Wycomico voters ended up putting this forward. Every single county in the state voted to approve marijuana. I guess what I'm struggling with is, is the juice worth the squeeze? Or what, what real, what real ability do we have to make an impact? And what does that actually look like? And that's, I'll be excited to see that. I'm glad you're going through the public process to be able to get there. But you know, at the end of the day, I, yeah, I don't want, just like I, you know, you go through Delaware and you see the, you know, the liquor stores and the cash for, you know, checks, you know, cash or check immediately, like all those kinds of things on every corner. I don't want to see, obviously, whether that be liquor stores or, you know, or cannabis shops on every corner. But other than that, I just don't really see where we have any kind of real leeway to do much because the, the state has been, I mean, just looking through this, I'm, they really didn't give us much of anything to really work with. And at the same time, I don't know what value we are. I, I'd be interested to see what you come up with, I guess, and, and hopefully that'll be helpful, but I just don't know that, you know. I mean, if we approach it with the same kind of thought as you don't want to have a, I mean, and, and maybe you can check this to make sure that it's comparable with, you know, you don't have a liquor store that's right next to, you know, to a daycare or whatever, or, you know, a Coco's Fun House, or, you know, like those kinds of things. So it'd be nice to be able to see what that really looks like. And, and last thing I'll note is obviously there's a huge difference between alcohol and, you know, which has no benefit whatsoever to the human body compared to, you know, I watched the, the piece on, from, you know, Dr., what's his name, on, basically on, on kids with, you know, there's medical uses, obviously. I, I don't know that many of the people that had their medical license, I'm not sure all those people had medical issues, but nonetheless, you know, you, you might view that more like a pharmacy. You know, you go to a pharmacy to be able to get a product that helps alleviate or, or, you know, your ailment. So I don't know, I guess I'm, I, just so I'm clear on where I'm strug, or struggling with and thinking through this, I don't think the state of Maryland has given us much leeway. And then I don't know that we're, are we viewing this more like it's a hazard like alcohol? Or are we viewing this more like it's a, you know, a pharmacy? And so I guess, I just want to throw that out to you all, just see where I'm coming from. And I, I've, I'm glad you're going through the public process. I'm glad to see what they come up with. I don't want the county to obviously be overrun with these kinds of stores and I don't know what, but I also don't know what ability we have to, to affect that because it, and in reviewing what you sent, I'm like, wow, the state of Maryland really just, just didn't give us any options to really regulate this, do they?
But that's what staff is for. That's what legal guidance is for. And that's actually why we're here today, to understand what the council's generic thoughts are about this. Appears you view it as a medicinal dispensary, but not to be overproliferated, but others may say, I want as minimal as possible. And understanding that because with the time crunch to get this done before another round of dispensaries, processors, or growers are awarded, there's zero ability to rezone where the current place is now. And when you look at it, it says 500 feet of a school, except look at where Y High is in relation to this. Is 500 feet really enough? I mean, this is what the state told us, but we've already got prime example number one of 500 feet isn't great. And that's not me speaking personally, that's me speaking from what we're getting feedback from the public and what you're seeing when you drive by at various hours of the day.
What about Dove Point? Isn't it really, really close to Dove Point?
It's right, right there.
Because they had, they had center, they had daycare center.
They have a lot of, a lot of services that occur at that particular facility.
The Board of Education have the.
The Board of Education, so there's a lot.
Early childhood right there.
Yes.
Old Board of Education.
Yes. So to head back to what you were saying, Councilman Hastings, no, it doesn't give us much leeway. But I think that the path that we're trying to take is a path that at least if we put something there, because again, these licenses are coming down the road soon. And if we don't have something, then we're going to be pretty much in a position where we won't have anything to kind of guide or to be able to help that particular situation.
Yeah. And just to add on to the, just to be clear that, you know, the, the piece I saw was Dr. Sanjay Gupta and his piece on, there was a couple, there was basically kids with, that have epilepsy issues and those, it changed my point of view about seeing it as what has been a Schedule I drug to being something different. But to be able to go from 12,000 seizures a year to two, you know, and, and to be able to have then those kids go into class, and that's because of the, you know, from understanding the CBD side of things of it. So I don't want to be able to, and from what I understood from following what the state of Maryland was doing, they were not going to allow pharmacies to sell this product. They wanted intentionally block, block that. So I don't want to have a situation where we make it harder for individuals who, you know, who need that particular medicine to then, to, to, to receive it. Not that I'm really worried about that, but I want to be aware of that because I think it's very quickly, and, and as the sheriff brought up earlier, you know, it gets cast as if it's the same as alcohol or other kinds of things. It's not quite that way. But, so I'd rather us be thoughtful on how we do it. I don't have strong feelings per se. I really don't feel like the state gives us much leeway because it should be like 5,000 feet, not, you know, like you're, you know, that's the distance at least that we should be thinking about.
So rocket hit 500.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think some research and a couple of the counties, one in particular had made it 2,500 feet and they got pretty much, was it one of the other counties, I think it was like 2,500 feet, and that was not supported. That's, they actually got called out on that one. So.
Wait for your guidance and the guidance from the commission.
Yes.
And as soon as you can get us any new information, Andrew, whatever you come up with during the meantime, it's fine. Feel free to pass it on to Mrs. Hurley as well. All right?
And I was just, I'm just going to throw this in right at the last second. You know, once we come up with a plan of some sort, I guess maybe we could get a survey. I mean, these people, the people that consume cannabis or condensed in one area right now and, you know, we serve everyone and, and apparently this is very popular. Now, I'm not a supporter of cannabis, I'm just saying this right now, but maybe it's a good idea to get a poll of, you know, what some of the users want and then get a poll of, well, you know, it's, apparently it passed, every county voted for it. I didn't, I, I didn't vote for it. Okay, I'm just going to say this, but being a nonpartisan person, I'm trying to figure out of maybe we can get a poll from, from one side and another side and kind of make a happy medium. That way we don't have a full room.
Thank you.
That were pre-existing primary or secondary schools, like you use a example of Y High, some, maybe some state officials need to be noted that the present dispensary is right across Y High.
It must meet, it's the 500 feet guidelines. It, it's just.
Is it 500 feet?
It's 500 feet.
500 feet, that's what it says.
Maybe it's the actual building.
It, it's.
They used to use with alcohol, the front door. And I don't know if they do the same with this or not. Article 2B, I think they used to say the front door or something like that, I believe.
All right, let's thank you again.
Thanks, guys.
I have to ask a counsel, we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn from the work session so we can go back into legislative session. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have to go back into legislative session very quickly here. We have to have a, entertain a motion to reconsider legislative bill 2023-11 for housekeeping measure on a date.
So move.
Second. All those in favor? The, the motion to reconsider passes.
What we have here actually is that what Mr. Mitchell had brought to our attention, but it got bypassed during the discussions. There's two references to the date of June 9th, 2023 in this legislative bill. Those need to be amended to June 6th. So I need a motion to do such.
Make a motion to amend legislative bill 2023-11 to replace the date of June 9th, 2023 with the date of June 6th, 2023.
Motion to amend the two dates, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion is carried. Legislative Bill 2023-11 has been amended. Entertain a motion to approve legislative bill number 2023-11 as amended.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Pose.
Want to, want to pose? Legislative Bill number 2023-11 as amended passes. No need for roll call vote on the amended? We know what the roll call is?
I don't know.
Mr. Mitchell, do you think?
That's probably the best thing to do, just as precautionary.
And you can do it, but you, you know, everyone voted one way except one person. So, yeah, but a roll call won't hurt.
All right, we'll do a roll call. Shani? Shani?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shane? Jean?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
All right.
Legislative Bill 2023-11 passes as amended.
As amended. And then you, a motion to adjourn.
Entertain a motion to adjourn for legislative session.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Means adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Hurley.